Good afternoon and welcome to the Brookfield Selectments Meeting on Thursday, June 7, 2018. Would you like to rise and join in the surveying flight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to have a motion to approve the payroll warrant and an expense warrant for 6/6/18 for $163,165.77. And the next one is 6/5/18 for $6,179.99.
Do you have that motion? You need to second it.
I'll second it. All in favor? Aye. Then we'd like to approve the Selectments Meeting minutes from 4/13/18.
Do you have that motion?
I will second that. All in favor? Aye. And now we have next from EMT and Fire Department. And we have what? The motion to accept the meeting?
Motion to accept the meeting.
I will second those. All in favor? Aye. So here on our rescue squad, we have anniversary EMT Mark Lovely for five, five twelve? For three years.
Yeah, five twelves.
Yeah, three years. And then on the Fire Department, we have Assistant Chief Herb Chafee for 41 years, Philip Chafee for 20, Matthew Phillips, five years, Ashley Marks, five years, Jay Haley, five year, one year, Aaron Rice, one year, and John Rose, one year. I would like to congratulate all of them for their service that they do at the town, and it's greatly appreciated.
Excellent.
Then our next one is like a motion to accept the cultural council minutes at 5/7/18.
Do you have that motion?
I'll second that motion. All in favor? Aye. We have announcements. The Fire Battalion will hold its annual chicken, five-day chicken barbecue on Sunday, June 17. Tickets are available from department members or by calling the station at 508-867-7306. For a $15 donation, you get a half of a barbecue chicken, salad, dinner roll, baked potato, and an individual pie. Serving from noon to 1:30. All meals are packed to go, but there will be limited seating at the station. And then we have Tyler Wolin, District Aid. Senator Ann Goby will be holding office hours at the Brookfield Town Hall from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. Tuesday, June 26. All are welcome. Okay, do you have any announcements that you would like to make?
No, let's forge.
All right, we're going to move on with the agenda, and we're going to go over the FY19 budget.
So just clarify, what we have before us is the Advisory Board's recommendations for the budget. What I understand is that there may be some missing pieces in Communications, and that what did not get printed on this page was the department's recommendation. And each year, we've had a column that talks about the department's recommendation, and then the Advisory Board's recommendation side by side. And what I understand is the town accountant is providing us that document. So I think in our review of the budget, we can do that, but I think we'd have to wait till Tuesday so we can see them side by side.
Okay.
So that'll be a Tuesday agenda topic.
So we just want to skip over this?
Up to you. I mean, I think maybe it would be worthwhile to kind of do a cursory review, but any final review, I think we ought to think about.
Also, I just want to point out that Carrie did say those figures aren't correct either.
Yeah, so we have some concerns. So again, as we kind of do a cursory review today...
All right, we'll go over them too.
All right, I'm following you.
All right. We're going to start here with FY19 expenses.
All right.
Okay, the moderator is $50. Selectman stipend is $6,000. The administrative assistant wages is $42,562.62. I think other years, we have wanted rounded off figures. That's probably what Carrie's going to do.
Hmm.
Okay, and then Selectman Municipal Clerk wages are $11,016.
And what we probably ought to cut, since we're talking wages, that this is before we have a recommendation for all wage increases. Okay?
Sure. Selectman's expenses, $9,000. Selectman physical exams, $800. Selectman payment and lieu of taxes, $850. Selectman computer maintenance, $17,000. Selectman website, $6,000. Selectman town website, no, the next one. Computer security is $2,000. Selectman consultant services is $10,000. Selectman computer acquisition is $5,000. CRM CP is $950. Oh, that dropped from...
Yep, this is typical.
Now, do we have to tell the whole total? Do we usually do that? The whole total?
You can.
Okay, the whole total for that is $111,178.62. Now, we move on. We have the Reserve Fund. This is the budget by the Advisory Board has, and that's for $25,000. Okay. Our next one is Town Accountant Wages. They recommended $46,800, but Personnel Board, if Cindy agrees with me, we had talked about this at our last Personnel Board meeting, and we said anybody that had a substantial increase in pay, we wanted to wait until we got back the figures from the Collins Center before anybody, you know, got a substantial amount. So she should probably go back down to $35,700 and probably with the 2% increase, but then we'll have to see what the Collins Center comes back with for all the salaries. Okay, so we'll circle that. All right. The accounting clerk is $3,600. Accountant expenses, $8,800, for a total of $59,000. Oh, no, it wouldn't be that, because she cut that.
Yeah.
So we...
It would be something less.
Something less. Okay. Town audit is $16,000. Advisory Board clerk salary is $500. Advisory Committee expenses, $500. Advisory Committee warrant books, $1,200, for a total of $2,200. And now we've got the assessor stipends. There's three of them, and they're for $1,500. Assessor assistant wages is $45,826.56. Assessor clerk is $10,740.60, and that's an increase from 12 hours to 15 hours. Assessor consulting services, $1,000. Oh, they dropped from last year. Assessor's expenses, $8,415, for a total of $67,482.16. Now, we have the treasurer's salary is $33,141.84. Now, on this one, no, that is the same, I guess, from last year's salary, and it probably has some money in there for the interim treasurer that we have right now. Treasurer clerk wages are, oh, no, it should be, oh, treasurer clerk wages and assistant. They don't have, this is wrong. Well...
Should be the assistant.
Assistant, and then they have consultant. There's no consultant for the treasurer. So those, I wonder if those two should be added. That's another thing we don't know either.
Okay, so we just leave it box for that one.
Okay. Payroll services, $5,500. Treasurer's expenses, $9,500. And that's, we can't really tell the total on that, because we're not quite sure either.
Right. But my guess is that the title's wrong.
Yeah, I think it is wrong.
What was that second one entitled, Tom?
It should be Assistant Treasurer.
Assistant Treasurer.
Yeah, we have a Treasury Consultant. They're going to be questioning that one.
No, no, it says, Karen, on 32, it says Treasurer clerk wage is $18,000, and then it says Treasurer assistant, $6,000. So that's another one that has to be questioned. All right. Collector's salary is, oh, that was jumped up too, $42,788.42. Brenda, was that right? Did you ask, did you ask for an increase in salary?
No.
So let's put a box on it.
Well, we'll have to do that too.
I thought we were told to level one.
Right.
Well, they had your, yeah, they had it last year as $35,167.56. So it's wrong then. But this is...
So Carrie's putting sheet together, will give us...
Yeah, Carrie's going to have to give us a sheet for that. And then you have, they also have collector assistant. Nope, they didn't, nope, they took that out. They took that out. Collector expenses, $9,400.
That's all right.
That was all right. Collector certification, $1,000. Collector software, $6,860. Okay.
On the expense account, 90% of that is supposed to be so.
All right, so we'll figure here. We don't know if this is right, but it's $59,968.42.
We have two questions.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want me to go run and get a highlight? I'm writing them down anyway, but you...
No, I'm circling, Karen. We both are.
No, I think this will just help us when she gets her...
Yeah, she gets the right one. Okay, and legal services is $65,000. And treasurer, collector, tax titus, $10,000. Town clerk salary, $32,718.86. Then they have assistant town clerk for $4,800, $80. And town clerk expenses, $2,600, for a total of $38,751.86. And now we have election and registration is $5,600, and that's because there's three elections coming up this year. And let's see, the next, so the total for that is, nope, we...
Yeah, you're at your $6,000.
$6,000 for the expenses.
Right.
Total is $11,600. And then Conservation Commission clerk wages are $892.50. Conservation expenses, $400. Total of $1,292.50. Then we have Planning Board clerk wages, $3,689.34. Planning Board salary, and there's five of them, it's $2,500. Planning Board expenses, $2,790, for a total of $8,979.34. Board of Appeals wages, $837.42. Board of Appeals expenses, $510, for a total of $1,347.42. Cable advisory expense is $2,200. Sharon, they have questions here. They said, do we approve? Is that right?
I can only speak to what happened a couple of weeks ago. The former chair of the Select Board disbanded that committee, which is in fact a standing committee and should not have been disbanded. Right now, there is no activity, and everybody on that committee, the committee was dissolved, so everybody on the committee is no longer there.
So let me just take this out?
I would think so, unless you want to keep it a standing committee and reappoint people. There is a charge for that committee that involves activities other than doing contracts.
Well, maybe we should.
I think we should leave it.
Yeah, we'll leave it in, and I think we should form a committee again. All right. Now, we have Municipal Custodial Wages. He also was at Town Hall, the police, and the highway. It's $14,029. Property, municipal property maintenance and improvements, $10,000. Town Hall improvements, $15,000. Municipal properties and utilities, $3,498.34. Total Town Hall is $42,527.34. Print Town Report is $1,800. Municipal heating is $5,500. That's a big, it says Town Hall gas.
Yeah, that's fuel.
Yeah, so we don't even actually know if that figure is right. Now, we've got Municipal Diesel Fuel is $20,000. Municipal Gas is $26,820. General, and then it says the general government here. The total is $649,709.58. Now, we're going to Public Safety. Police wages full-time is $230,047. Police Chief's salary is $72,189. Police part-time is $64,532. Police clerk wages, $11,419.92. Overtime police wages is $48,000. Police expenses is $58,966. And police station expenses, there's a black line, it's $487,153.92. Carrie, do you have different figures than we have?
I did not hear what you said. I'm sorry.
Do you have different figures than we have? Because we're going over what the Advisory Board did.
Yes, some of them are different figures. There's my spreadsheet. The first column is the, this is the budget request.
Okay.
So this is department head?
Yep, that's the department request. And the last column is the advisory recommendations. Anything that's in the dark is a budget sheet I did not get back from the Advisory Board.
Okay. And Steve has this now?
I'm sorry?
Does Steve, or the Advisory Committee have this communication?
He will now. Yeah, I just, there's different...
Perfect, thank you.
So, do we want to maybe go over this again on Monday, or what do we want to do?
Well, I just want to tell you that I know that when I talk to Steve Gillis, he plans to have this printed, I think, well, Monday. I think it's going to be Friday, so I don't know how you're going to do it. I mean, he can still, I don't know, because I guess he can print it, but...
Yeah, but we don't want to print it though with wrong figures in it.
I can't get any of the other department heads to give me a call back.
Thank you, Bob. We only asked an hour ago.
I know.
So, Mr. Snyder, what do you, do we, do you want to go?
I think we, I think we should continue going, and then we'll go back, and we're going to go look at what Carrie's missing.
What Carrie has. Okay. We're down to, I think it's now, we're down to, he doesn't, they don't even have anything in here for, they do have the clerk's wages. All right. Okay, now we're down to the Fire Department. Fire wages, $46,340. Fire Chief's salary, $3,545.52. Fire expenses, $34,000. Fire recurring recertification testing, $11,500. Fire asset repair replacement is $15,000. And then he's got Fire Utilities. They said that was, nope, $8,900 for the note line 77?
Yep, that's because we broke out the municipal utilities this year, so that the Town Hall is not going to be paying for all the departments.
Okay.
So that's their portion of their utilities that the Select Board normally would be covering.
All right, thank you.
And if you look at this spreadsheet I gave you also, you'll see that the Fire Department's numbers were different.
Okay. We'll look that up. We're going to go over these right now. But these, all the numbers were different. Telephone contracts and leases, $6,509.97. And I mentioned another thing too, Carrie. Don't we usually round off these figures? Because we usually don't have cents, and that's something that they did. That's why it's a problem thing in the budget. Building inspector is $16,438.32. Building Inspector assistant wages, $543.66. And building inspector's expenses, $100. Total building inspector is $17,081.98. Plumbing and gas inspector, $4,069.80. And the gas and plumbing inspector assistant wages are $346.80. Gas and plumbing inspector expenses, $550, for a total of $4,966.60. Wire and expecta salary, $4,041.24. Wire and expecta assistant wages is $357, and the wire and expected expenses is $400, for a total of $4,798.24. Zoning enforcement officer is $7,211.40. Zoning enforcement office's expenses is $380, for a total of $7,591.40. Now, we go down to the Emergency Management Agency. It's BEMA, it's $3,500. Emergency Managed Agency's salary, $430, and both of those have questions on. And then Blackboard Connection is $3,700, for a total of $7,630. Animal Control Officer, $5,928.24. Animal Control Officer assistant wages is $666.60. Animal Control expense is $2,000, for a total of $8,594.30. Parking ticket clerk and hearing officer stipend, $250. Parking ticket expense, $100. Total parking is $350. Tree warden expenses is $16,40. Shade tree expenses is $2,500. Total public safety is $682,501.92. Now, the school salary, they don't have anything now.
But they've got the total. They've got the total.
It's on my spreadsheet.
It's on yours? Okay, all right. School committee salary, $1,500. Regional school committee salary, $1,000. Regional school assessment is $1,660,609. Transportation is $77,968. Total expenses is $3,672,233, and a total of $4,754,310. Now, we're doing public works. Highway superintendent wages is $55,455.36. Highway operator wages is $81,979.44. Highway OT/PT other wages is $5,352.96. Highway wages administrative assistant is $18,842.26. Highway police detail and flaggers is $3,570. Seasonal highway worker is $14,851.20. And let's see, our next one here is highway expenses, $6,060,000. Highway certifications, $930. Highway plow private roads, $1.
And Harvey shouldn't be there because we need to warn her.
No, because we have an article. That should probably come out. Okay. So the total would be, would be wrong, but then they said something about, oh, yeah, same thing, the $8,000 note line 77. So the total for that would be $2,051,182.42. Ice and snow account is $75,000. Would you like to read the last question?
I can do that if you'd like to take a break.
Yeah, that would be nice.
So cemetery wages, $17,723.52. Cemetery superintendent salary, $5,183.64. Cemetery expenses, $6,000. Cemetery improvements, $1,500, for a total of $30,407.16. Total public works is $369,89.58. So we now move into health sanitation. Board of Health salary, $3,600. Board of Health clerk wages, $5,682.42. Board of Health agent, $685.44. Board of Health Animal Inspector salary, $1,131.18. Board of Health Title V Administration, $522.24. Board of Health expenses, $4,000, for a total of $15,621.28. Transfer station wages, $25,062.42. Station, transfer station wall test, $12,789. Transfer station expenses, $92,770, for a total of $130,621.42. Community health program, $950. Council on Aging Outreach worker, $1,530. Council of Aging Tri-Valley Crisis Intervention, $799. Council on Aging Medicare is $2,000. Council on Aging expenses, $1,400, for a total of $5,729. Director of Veteran Services salary, $1,030. Veterans Agent salary, $3,605. Veterans Agent expenses, $240. Veterans Agent Case Load is $55,000, for a total of $59,875. Total Health Sanitation and Special Services of a total of $212,796.72. Total Health Sanitation and Special Services, of a total of two hundred and twelve thousand seven ninety-six and seventy cents. Cultural and Recreation. Library Director Wages, forty thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Library Custodian Wages, seven thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Library Assistant Wages, thirty-one thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars. Library Saturday Holiday and Vacation, three thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Library Expenses, thirteen thousand two hundred dollars. Library Books, Videos, Periodicals, twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars. For a total of one hundred and twenty-two thousand five sixty-five. Recreation Commission Expenses, eight thousand one hundred. South Palm Beach Expense, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. For a total of nine thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Historical Commission, one thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars. Memorial Day, three thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars. Cultural Council Expenses, total eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. Total Cultural Council and Total Cultural and Recreation, one hundred and forty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Debt and Interest. Fire Truck Principal is paid off, so that'll do that. Fire Truck Interest Paid Off. Police Station, one thousand one hundred and fifteen thousand. Police Station Interest is forty thousand. Yep, and so what we should do is just put boxes around these because we have a warrant article. Thank you, Carrie. I'll just finish reading that so that it's clear that these numbers will be reflected in other warrant articles and other approaches. Sawmill Principal is seven thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. Sawmill Pond Interest is two thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars and forty-five cents. So again, these will be reviewed in other warrant articles. Okay, Assessments and Other Mandated Expenses. Worcester County Retirement, two hundred and seventy-five thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars. Unemployment Insurance, four thousand. Group Health and Life Insurance is five hundred and twenty-five thousand. Medicare Town Share is fifty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars. General Insurance is one hundred and forty-five thousand. Total Assessments and Other Mandated Expenses, one million thirteen thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Now we move to the Water Department, line nine hundred. Water Department Commissioner's Salary, eighteen hundred dollars. Water Department Clerk Wages, eleven thousand four hundred and, I'm sorry, eleven thousand four hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-six cents. Water Department Superintendent Salary, fifty-eight thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Water Department Secondary Operator Wages, five thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. Water Department Temporary Help, two thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents. Water Department Expenses, thirty-one thousand seven hundred dollars. For a total of one hundred and eleven thousand eleven dollars and eighty-four cents. Operating Budget, again, we've got all puts and takes in this, but at the current additive value of eight million one hundred and three thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. And then we have Emergency Squad, again, below the budget because it's self-funded, is line two hundred. Emergency Squad Wages of one hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars. Emergency Squad Expenses of forty-two thousand, for a total, total Emergency Squad is two hundred and twenty-four thousand eight ninety-three. So what we probably want to do is go compare sheet to sheet.
Carrie, do you want to come up with us when we do this? You don't mind? Yeah, you should compare sheet to sheet here.
So whoa. If I look at this thing, Linda. If I get down to, ooh, we don't even have the same lines, now I'm nervous.
I have put identically on my spreadsheet, the last column matches theirs, their spreadsheet, so if you just want to look at the one.
Just block by block?
Yeah.
Okay, so now, what, okay. Which document will we be discussing Tuesday and then on Friday?
Well is the one that I have provided you.
Alright, so you have their recommendation to the right.
Yes, their recommendations are the very last column.
Okay, so if we block by block, just if we can see where the disparities might be.
On my budget sheet, I'm missing the cable advisory spreadsheet, so I don't have that figure. That's why that's off.
Alright, so that's why that's off, and you're asking for that.
Correct.
From one to the other, we're basically within a thousand dollars.
Yes.
So it's really not significant to worry about.
Yeah, the first real discrepancy doesn't happen until...
Well, let me just go over this, Carrie, because you weren't here necessarily. So what we have is Town Accountant, salaries and stuff, we are gonna wait on the Collins information to make decisions. Okay? And then the next set of blocks was the Treasurer's Salary and the line, the Treasurer Clerk is really what we believe to be an assistant?
Yes.
Because there's two different figures on here.
There's two figures and we don't, one or both.
One is the Treasurer's Salary, that's the thirty-three, one forty-one, eighty-four.
Yep, so that checks, that's not a problem.
The Assistant should be eighteen, six seventy oh eight.
Hang on a second. Yes. So Treasurer Assistant is the eighteen, and Treasurer Payroll Services.
Is fifty-five.
Is, okay, I gotta get to this.
And then they've got in here Assistant. Then they've got an extra one in here, Carrie, it said Treasurer's Clerk Wages. That would be the Assistant, the eighteen.
I think if you look at it, it's probably crossed off, is it for the six thousand?
Yeah, what's the six thousand?
They would like a consultant to be on call for the year.
Would that mean they'd like Keith to stay on even after we hire a Treasurer?
That is not my, I have no idea.
That's probably what that is.
What they're talking about, so that's a good suggestion.
Okay.
Alright, so then okay, so the difference is just that then? We took care of that.
And then we have the question, they had last year's wages for the tax collector? No. Yeah, in last year's wages, they had for the collector's salary, they had thirty-five thousand seven hundred and, then you have thirty-five thousand one sixty-seven fifty-seven.
What line are you looking at, because my collector's salary says forty-two thousand.
Right.
You have it as line thirty-seven, they have it as thirty-seven. I bet the one from Carrie. Is this the right one?
Line four hundred?
Yes.
Should say forty-two thousand seven oh eight.
Mine says
Yeah.
Thirty-seven.
Yep.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright.
So there is a difference, and we have that as a question.
That's a question too, they had a difference on that one, on the collector.
They do?
Wait a minute, you must have looked at the different sheets, because mine says forty-two too.
Yeah, the one I just printed and gave you has line four hundred, collector's salary as forty-two, seven oh eight, forty-two.
Right, so what you have is you have a line on theirs that talks about collector assistant. And what's happened is that they added those two together to come up to the forty-two thousand seven oh eight. So that's where that's coming from.
Oh.
So, otherwise we're in agreement. So we check there. Elections, we check there. Total Planning. Total Planning, where's Planning? Planning's there, we check. So Conserv, so, okay, there's Conservation Commission, so that's, we check there. Board of Appeals.
I have no information from that department.
You have no, but the totals. Okay, so we're missing some information from the department.
What page is the Board of Appeals here on this?
It's fifty-nine or six thirty.
Fifty-nine, okay. Okay, here we are.
And Carrie doesn't have what was requested, my guess is that what was requested is what they got, because it's within twenty dollars of last year.
Yeah.
So, but I'm not gonna worry about that one, within twenty dollars. Alright, so now we have, I'm gonna go to General Government, you totaled it, General Government. So we're, again, on General Government, we're one thousand dollars different. So let's find the one thousand, so ten is correct. That's that, that's that, so that's, we agreed on that. Print that, we agree on that. The Mr. Pete, we agree on that. The twenty thousand, we agree on that. We agreed on that. So we have a difference?
It's because we're missing the Board of Appeals Budget.
Board of Appeals.
That's the thousand dollar difference.
Okay, thank you, goes up to that line, okay, so that's the difference.
Okay, so we're missing there.
We're missing that, alright, so that's not great, but not bad. Okay, now you've got Police Department, so...
I don't have anything from their department.
You've reached out the mic for what is lying there. So that, the big hole is what we have for Police. Okay? And then okay, now we have a difference on Fire Department. And what is that?
It's all in the wages. The Fire Department requested fifty-six thousand for wages, and the Advisory Board advised to level fund. But we did go into deficit at that figure, so I don't know why we would level fund it.
Okay, so we have an outstanding question, and...
And then they had the utilities, you don't have the utilities listed in it, where they do.
Yes, I do, it's the last line under nine thirty. And again, that's just being broken out from the Select Board's responsibility.
So that, it's really, we ran into deficit, we really should talk about it.
Yes.
So, and again, it's not that it's that much money, so that's a good thing. Okay, so now Buildings.
I don't have his budget sheet, so...
Okay, but you're best.
They're level funded, so I'm sure it's gonna be fine.
Yep, so so that should work. The four thousand should work. The gas plumbing stuff? Yeah, wiring is the same.
Their expenses on that are not the same.
On the wiring?
Oh, I see, I see, we got a block, so we've got a question. We've got a question on that.
I'm sorry, on the gas and plumbing.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, remember, he, remember what happened is he had some, I guess he said last year he didn't have his expense budget or something, so he had to, he wanted to make sure it was asked for this year, but I see they turned it down.
But then they reduced it, so I don't understand that.
So we want to have in the final sheet, Department Recommendations, to make sure that what they ask for is what is on the sheet to be discussed.
Right.
Cool. So zoning, we're fine on, so I'm going to Emergency Management. Emergency Management. What they ask for is what they're getting. Animal Control, what they're asking is what they're getting. Parking Ticket Asked and Received. Tree Warden, Tree Warden is yes. Shade is yes. So we're into Schools. So what they're asking is what we're saying, we're delivering.
And then we...
And we're missing School Salaries.
That's included in the School Expenses.
Oh, it is, okay, alright, so that's over here, so then that's not an issue today.
Well, the School Expenses, the salaries are included in that.
Yep.
Okay, cool. Alright, so now we're into Public Works. And I'm gonna rush to the bottom to see if I met numbers, our numbers match, right?
Yes, they do.
And the only exception in the matching is we have a warrant article for the private roads, for the dollars, so I'll see that.
I'll take it out, yep.
This dollar comes out, alright, thanks, Carrie. Alright. So Cemetery. Cemetery. Oh, I missed, I missed Snow Nice. Snow Nice is there. So Streetlights, where are Streetlights?
Right below Snow Nice.
Oh, I see, it's up at the top on the next page on this document, okay, cool. Alright, so then we now come to Cemetery Wages and Other, and it's thirty thousand four oh seven sixteen, so we agree. And now I'm gonna bump to Board of Health. Board of Health.
The first line of Board of Health is the salary. And Board of Health requested to level fund at thirty-six seventy-two, Advisory Board lowered them to thirty-six hundred. So that's another question.
Yep, so we have that would be the difference there, okay. That's the same, that's the same, that's the same, that's the same, that's the same. Community Health Program is down there, so the only thing is the issue of the seventy-two dollars on thirty-six hundred.
On that section, yes.
Cool. Okay, Transfer Station. Transfer Station, that's the same, that's the same.
I'm assuming Council on Aging is gonna be level funded, but I don't have a sheet from them.
Okay.
Unless they don't have them, I may give them a listen and call them, who may just make sure that they want to.
And the Veteran Services, they did the same thing with his salaries. His prior year was one thousand fifty dollars sixty cents, and they want to fund him at one thousand thirty dollars. And again, with the agent, he was funded last year at thirty-six seventy-seven ten, and they're recommending thirty-six oh five.
So both of those would be questions for that?
Yes, why would we lower them?
The two forty and fifty-five are the same, so we've got questions for Tuesday. Okay, Library, how are we doing with Library?
We match all there.
We all match.
Great, okay. That's good. Recreation matches as well.
The debt and interest, is that where we're at now?
Exactly.
If you look at my spreadsheet, I went to Keek this morning because the budget that they approved back in March clearly stated that these numbers were not actual, and they would need to check again in May. So I did that, and the numbers are as I have listed in the requested column. Because even though there is an article to reduce that debt with the refund from the school, we still have to assess the two oh five payment, that's what's due.
Okay. So it's both voting here and the one on?
No, this is the true debt that we have to budget for.
Got it.
Yep.
So now we're gonna vote this.
Yep.
And now our action on the warrant article.
Will be to reduce it when that refund comes in.
When that, okay, so we need two affirmative votes.
Yes.
And this would be reduced.
Yes.
Thanks, Carrie.
Because in the same instance, if the second vote does not pass... Because in the same instance, if the second vote does not pass, we still have to fund this, this payment.
We have to pay, and this would be the, the vote?
Yep.
Cool. All right, so that...
Raise on retirement?
Yeah, those are all, those all add up.
Those all add up good.
And that all adds up? Okay. So, we have one set of blocks there. I'm gonna go through to the top one, so we can agree on what we're, and if Karen can help us in communicating.
Yeah.
So, what we have is the town accountant's salaries, that we have a strategy of using, level funding, but a discussion later in the fall.
Because we're waiting for the Collins Center, they're supposed to be coming in with their figures.
Right, and so then, the next one is the assistant treasurer wages. The idea of the consultant. Not that would, would disagree with it, but we oughta make sure that we highlight it. And then, the next one I have is the Board of Appeals. You're looking for feedback from what they requested versus whatever.
We didn't, I had...
We needed...
I had circled fire patent, but we don't have any questions there, is that right?
We do have, um...
The wages.
The wages.
The wages, okay.
That's the only thing there. And then, um... Yeah, then Carrie's gonna, not only police, you're gonna get feedback from Mike as far as what he actually requested on police, and that's the same question for Peter as well, right?
Yes, well, no, I have Peter what he asked for.
Okay, so it's just having the two numbers beside one another?
Right.
And that that would be a difference from what advisory requested versus what department?
Yes.
So, Carrie, I have on council on aging, building inspector, wiring inspector, and CBA, I'm gonna call to get figures for, okay? Anything else?
A cable advisory?
Say it again?
Cable advisory?
Yes.
That, that's the part, that cable advisory.
Okay.
But we, we gotta keep the money in, and we probably get it going.
Well, then it happened, wouldn't sure if I'd find it, 'cause no one really asks, it's all about yours, but...
Well, we can leave the twenty-two hundred ones.
We'll leave it in, we'll discuss that for a start, and we'll probably get that going again.
So, we got a few things to, to work on. You need some documentation from other people outside of town, and once they provide us information, then that should put us in a fairly decent position.
And then, when did he wanna print things?
I think he said tomorrow, I mean, I could be wrong, but I think that, what did he say?
He hasn't said anything to me.
I didn't even know the message, I'm waiting for the call to get, I'll definitely check the call again.
Because, I mean, if we've got discrepancies...
But, but how we can handle it is that Carrie's printing what the department's requested, and then there will be a, a column that will be what advisory recommends. And what we have is a half dozen or so lines that would be requested, so we can debate those at another time, but we'll see the clear difference between the two.
Debate over on the town hall floor if you want.
Yeah, and they're really, I mean, we're not talking a lot of money.
No.
So, it's, it might be an easy discussion.
Kill him in a time, in worst case scenario, he'll have to go to Staples and print them.
I, I do wanna mention with, with my budget, however, that when I met with them, it was March, and the call-in center was supposed to be done before budgeting. And they did send documentation as to what their study provided as far as the town accountant wages, so...
Well, the personnel, the personnel board, when we met, we decided, and I think, who came in with us? Wasn't Lee Farr came in?
Yes.
Yeah, Lee didn't know really all that much about it, Steve sent him in, and we had said we were gonna wait until the Collins Center was supposed to be in by sometime this month.
That was before they had all the weather...
Right.
Yeah.
They had all those weather points where they had to hold off under use.
Yeah. So, personnel board, we had thought we, we could wait, you know, until the figures come in, and then we'll fix the figure in the fall.
Okay.
That's what we thought we'd do.
All right, so is that what we wanted to do for that line in today?
For this one, you mean the town accountant wages?
No, I, as far as that.
Oh, okay, yeah.
As far as the FY nineteen budget review that we had on the agenda, is that what we wanted to accomplish?
Yes, that's what we wanted to accomplish.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie. Now, did we wanna meet again on Tuesday for anything?
If they... Well, I'm meeting Tuesday, you have a meeting Saturday, I've been in a little, uh, you're playing, I don't tell me, so I'll just put budget review again on Tuesday, if you wanna...
And, and what it would be is just limited to those five or six lines that we have had to...
And we hope that there's some changes on it. And the Carrie, now Carrie is gonna fix those changes, or we have to have the advisory board in here?
So, what I, what I'm hopeful is, and sorry, we just lost Carrie, is that we're gonna have one document, and on that document will be a line that talks about department requests and advisory recommends, so that we can then just see those that we are in disparity.
Okay. Even if he, if he even can't get to do them, and now, he goes to see, he sees Gary Fuller, wasn't he really good?
He's gonna go see Gary, and I think Gary's pretty quick, I don't know his timeline, but what I'm saying is, worst case scenario, they can go to Staples and, and print them out that day. I mean, I mean, hate to have to do that, but I'm gonna call him and see what his timeline is for Gary. Cause your meeting now has to be out Tuesday.
Yeah, cause tell him that there's a few discrepancies here, and we've gotta go over them. All right. Okay, so we'll set them with the budget. Now, our next one to go on is to review treasurer applications.
You can share mine, most if you like.
I think Brenda's leaving, I didn't know if you could just take out a order of the other...
Oh.
Okay, Brenda.
Oh, I'm gonna call you, I do the same, so I just wanted to just ask, can you guys possibly reconsider the sidewalk practical consideration?
Well, one of the reasons that we, we thought, we wanna wait and see actually, you know, how the monies are going here in town, 'cause we're not quite sure, you know, what, what we're getting in like for free cash or anything, so we wanted to wait for that.
I completely understand that, and I, I don't have a problem with that, if that's the reason for the denial, but if it's for other reasons, then I'd like to know those other reasons.
My take is, do we have agreement between highway conservation and yourself as far as where the, where it would be? Where it would...
I was leaving that up to highway and conservation, because they obviously...
And so, are we in dispute as to where it could go?
Okay, that, that was another question, I think, of that now.
Well, we've been going to the east side or the west side of the street?
But then, wasn't there a question whether or not we go into the west one?
Okay, so that's my concern. Again, my, my basis of understanding is that for the last three or four years, I have done the earth day pickup with my wife between Quaybark Equipment and Whites landing. So, given that, what we have is on what I consider the east side, the Nanatomqua side of the river, when you get to the antique dealer's home, that stretch, just as you're now leaving town and going towards the antique dealers, it basically falls off to the left, or to the east, where it would be impractical on the east side to be able to put a sidewalk there. The twelve feet or so that we're talking about actually is in, in the water.
Right.
So, so if, if I, from my knowledge of that stretch of road, the west side has certainly enough frontage to be able to support a sidewalk. And the question is, if we can support the sidewalk, then it comes to conservation to say, is anybody gonna have a, a setback requirement of a sidewalk that would come to the roadway? No, so, so from what we're, we're getting a nod from conservation that nobody's gonna impact us if we put, wanna put a sidewalk to the west side of the roadway?
Well, I talked to DEP, which you already said you didn't have a problem with, because Kirby and I had taken them out, well, and it was twelve feet to the water, and he wants to make it up to four feet. So, I said I didn't have a problem.
Okay, so what we have is, we, we have no, no dispute between highway conservation, that the road, that a sidewalk could be on the west side of, of the roadway?
The difficulty with putting it on the west side of roadway is you have to cross the roadway, 'cause the sidewalk is on the east side of the bridge.
Yep.
And that's a bad spot to have anybody crossing the roadway.
So, then I would then come back to conservation and ask the question, do you agree with me that the area just before the antique dealer is in fact in the water? Is that, I mean, that's, that's the issue?
So, if we put it on the west side, so until, say, right before Whites landing, put a crosswalk there, and then it's also not anything accessible on the Whites landing portion of the sidewalk? So, it's another issue that we should probably address. And crosswalks, I don't know why we're gonna crosswalks, 'cause it's, it's a very dangerous stretch.
It's a...
We have two fatalities, I just don't wanna wait until we have another fatality, and then we're gonna do something?
No, no, I think you're right. I'm in favor of doing it, I just didn't want to have somebody coming back from DEP or conservation or other that would come back, so...
Since I put it out there, I've had more no's and for various reasons, and that is my problem. If we don't have the money to do it, I'm, I'm okay with that, maybe next year?
Yeah, that's what we've gotta say, really, where we are financially, you know, that being...
I mean, if we do get free cash certified, and if we do have money, that's what I'm asking for, then it would be...
We'll know more, I think, when we get, when we get the free cash figures, and then, didn't Karen had written to me, you had said something, even about if we could get a grant to do it?
Oh, it's possible.
Possible, even to get a grant to do it.
Yeah, well, you get back...
I don't have my breath, you know, it's the state promised to put the sidewalk in to begin with, so...
Yeah.
Right, but, but along that line, on the open space thing, it's an open question, as we now get to the next phase of the open space, is that there are grant monies available for recreational purposes, that she wants to come, and trying to encourage us to, to in fact apply for some of those grants. So, there, that could be a possible, so maybe the best thing is if, if we're now waiting to have an understanding of free cash and all the rest, we do wait for the fall, and maybe what we do is have a meeting with the state folks that talked about those kinds of things, and see what we could do to come up with some cash.
Yeah, I've been waiting like fifteen years, though, it hasn't happened, so I don't think that's gonna happen, so I don't know.
But just in the meantime?
Yeah, just do it.
I'll do some noodling.
We'll see.
It'd be a good idea to talk to the others on this deal, because at least already, the property line is the edge of the road. And I don't know if other needs are the same, but you would be talking about eminent domain then? Or with sidewalk on private property?
So, we get some research to do as well.
Yeah, I think so.
Anything would be better than for the crosswalk in.
Oh, in front of Quaybark Road. It would be better to be on... Cross them back further from the bridge, because people come on over that bridge, and how fast?
That's, yeah, that's dangerous, even if you stopped out there to see somebody coming over the bridge.
But I watched somebody with a baby carriage try to walk down that street the other day, and my heart was in my throat.
Right.
And, you know, there's, there's a lot of people that like that stretch, and it's such an area...
No, it's a good idea, Brenda, there's no question about it, it's just not how, how to get it done.
I just, um, waited like fifteen years.
Kenny, could you go look at the, the area that I have of concern? And see, see what, if...
And that's part of the problem, is there was the guardrail, and then there's, there's not that much space of broken pavement, and then you've got the line. So, people walk on the other side with their back towards traffic, and that's a disaster waiting to happen.
Exactly.
Distracted drivers. I seen a guy doing it the other day with a cane, so it's just, it's not good, yeah.
Herb and I had talked about on the west side, and used the grindings off that one forty-eight, that is what the, the DEP was concerned about, what are you gonna use for dirt? No dirt, that's what, they were all upset about, they don't want the dirt going back into the wellhead.
Right.
So, you guys gave us the grindings, that's what we wanted, only four feet.
And that will help also stabilize the road, that's what Herb said. Which one forty-eight needs some work, that's for sure.
So, we got a little homework meant to do.
But I think, yeah, let's keep moving towards the, the ultimate goal.
Representative Donnie Berkey had said that for them to finish the one forty-eight project from the last system road to the new bridge, we've been talking about doing something next, well, if we can take care of it, we, we'll just like to make a path, that's all. Kirby and I were talking four foot path, would be pretty good with that stuff, 'cause if they're able to dip, and you cover it a little bit off with the grindings, you don't have to put any dirt there. Grindings are...
Yeah, you're not filling anything, and the river.
Oh. The river's twelve feet away, so if you do four foot path...
Again, west side's easy, east side's the problem, and the best place to put it is on the east side from a safety perspective. That's the dilemma.
On the east side, I think it's better.
Because of the side, you, you stay away from the whole idea of crosswalks. Kenny, let's, let's...
The bridge, I don't think they have, that's, that's the most dangerous spot anyway, at least on the straightaway, you can see it.
Yeah.
Corner is worse.
Let's take a walk. Grab Herbie, let's, let's go for a walk. My commitment to you, Brenda.
I don't have any problem with it.
Good. And let's, we'll, we'll do it before now on Tuesday, 'cause we're gonna bring up this.
And then, then next year, we have to work on Quaybark Street.
That'll be fine. Yes, we do.
That was promised to me way back when Alan Martell was there.
Okay. Let's start and get something done.
Okay.
All right, moving on.
Okay, move. Okay, why don't we move on to vacation?
Oh, yeah.
We have vacation carriers.
Yep.
We have, um, this is from Al Jones, he said, "I have three vacation days remaining that I won't be able to use by June thirtieth. I would like to use all of these during the first week of July eighteen. Holly told me I can request to have the hours moved to next year, how, how do I do this?" Well, he's, he's already asked, so...
Yeah, motion to approve.
I'll second the motion, all in favor, aye. That's the rumor there. Now, we have here, CBG invoices.
Motion to sign?
Motion to sign, uh, the total amount of those are two thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents.
Do you have a second?
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to sign the second amendment, or do you...
Um, it's all the same, it's just the copies. All right, our next is correspondence. And this is from Commonwealth of Mass Dot, and it's about when they would like to, uh, webber road here, national. Okay, it said, "A part of the Massachusetts Bridge Inspection Program, MassDOT Highway Division now also performs inspections of municipality-owned bridges whose spans are between 10 feet and 20. A copy of the recent bridge inspection failure report is enclosed." And it is a review of the attachment, and it says, "Report please, not the deficiencies highlighted for your immediate attention. There's a repair, rehabilitation, or construction of any bridges to address the deficiencies reported. It's the owner slash custodian responsibility. Chapter 90 monies may be used for these purposes." And so I guess they have.
This sounds like dumb brick all over again.
Yeah, dumb, yeah, all over again. Weber, they're showing Weber Road.
Okay.
And, they're showing here, railings, bridge railings, approach guard.
So let's refer that to the-
Yeah.
Highway, and see what they say, because highway needs another dumb brick.
I know. Karen, maybe we should, okay, you're coming in. Maybe what we should do on this MassDOT, is refer this to the highway.
Okay.
Okay, because we don't want to have dumb brick.
We do, we always do. I just wondered, I didn't have Beth preparing the resumes, but I did find this was a ton of two, and Mr. Gillis emailed this to me, and this is going to have to be approved at that, because that's where it has to be, but these are, everything's all approved except for those.
So just, we'll just have Carrie have line to line, and-
We'll just give these to Carrie then.
Yeah.
I believe he emailed Carrie.
Oh, okay.
And we're talking, what, four items, five items now?
Yeah. Now, this is another one. Okay, what, this is from Commonwealth of Mass also, they're looking for a search for leased space by the Department of Transitional Assistance.
They want to put an office, some of these.
They want to put an office in, they've got here for towns, Brookfield, Brookfield, Cheltenham, Dudley, East Brookfield, Holland, North Brookfield, Oxford, South Brookfield, Sturbridge, Wales, Warren, Webster, or West Brookfield. It's for client and service and administrative offices, and they need approximately 8,200 square feet of usable area. I don't think we have anything here that they can use.
No.
There's nothing, nothing here that they can use.
Fortunately.
So I think that was it.
Well, it was just the applications?
Oh, yeah, we had the applications, but I mean, that was all, eh?
Did we vacation carryover?
Yeah, we did that one, we agreed to do that.
And CBG invoices?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, perfect.
Okay. Well, I have, we have treasurer, treasurer resumes were due in by the fourth on Monday, and I have picked three people, and I also, I think Mr. Snyder has the same people that we'd like to get in. We haven't heard yet from Ms. Coughlin.
Right. I sent it to her at 11.
Do we want to announce three names?
No, I think we should wait till Tuesday.
We'll wait till Tuesday, but we have three people.
But I think the important thing is that we had a total of 13 resumes.
Yes.
And my, my study of those 13 resumes, I used as a, just a very quick cursory to figure out who might rack and stack, municipal experience, tax experience, and business experience. And what I found were, were 10 of the 13 may have had other state background, but not Massachusetts, which is problematic. And the largest number had business experience, but no municipal experience, and that would be problematic as well, so.
Yeah, because we did, you know, we had a lot from out of state that had put resumes.
Yeah, which is amazing. I mean, amazed that we got 13.
Mm-hmm.
But again, I think we ought to wait till Tuesday to double-
To double check and see who Beth has, and then after town meeting, we'll start setting up appointments for that. All right, so, that's it. And last you have anything else to bring up, public access?
Is there a list on the bridges that they want to, or they report that they inspected or they want to inspect?
It was Weber Road they inspected.
Weber Road.
Just Weber.
Yeah, the Weber Road they want.
They said the handrails are-
Oh, we, oh, we have to do, we forgot, we have to do these.
Oh, it's going to say under other, this is why I have you want to, Peter's request, first of all, Peter had a request that you rethink your recommendation regarding that machine to launder the clothing, you saw the email, correct? I think you saw it.
I didn't realize it was for laundry.
Yeah, well, he sent another one regarding, saying that that big, the large figure for the vehicles was just so what people know that that's what's needed, it's not necessarily expected, which that'll be talked about on the town forum show, but also regarding that laundry, I sent it over to you guys, too, and maybe you didn't get it yet, if you came later. What, do you want to take it up on Tuesdays? Because what it is, is there are studies showing that that debris is really hazardous to their health, to affect his health.
Yeah.
Put that on Tuesdays?
Yes. And then he-
Of itself and safety, we have to do-
Yeah, we have to deal with that. And then, I must have seen the one that he had on there for, he thought the CIPC had changed their mind, and they were going to give him some money for the, he thought, for one of the trucks. And I talked to Kermit this morning, and he said that is expected for FY '20. That's what he was probably thinking about.
Well, and again, I think that to Peter's point, is to have the warrant article there, so we discuss it, is a good thing.
Yeah.
And given our state of financial concerns, or making sure we have all the information that we have, we're really, I'd be reluctant to make any decision until we have all our information.
Yeah, we need all of our information.
But again, Peter's concern is about the concern.
Yes. Okay, we've, we've got here, we have to go over for town meeting, for the special town meeting on Friday, June 15th, the recommendations.
By the way, the article hasn't, haven't done theirs yet, and we thought it was going to be done on the floor, because remember that joint meeting, they had to cancel, but Mike said it's important that the recommendations are in the warrant book, so if you do it today, and then tonight the advisory board will do theirs, it'll get in the warrant every time.
All right. Okay. Article one is to see if the town will vote to transfer, borrow some of money from the general fund to the highway expense or take any action.
This one seems as a reimbursement, I think we should, very, be pleased to receive it, so I would sponsor this.
Yeah, that's a, yeah, support that one. And now, second one, article two, is to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow some of money for the fire department wages account.
He does not have a figure for me, that's why he's not figuring it out.
So he doesn't have, we'll, we'll just, we'll approve of it, and we'll just-
I'm saying we should support it.
Oh, yes, we will support it, we'll just have to sit down with Carrie and find out, you know, where the money will come from to get the figure and where it's going to come out of. And the third is to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow some of money for the library building maintenance account. And, borrow some of money. Oh, so they already have it already, they just want to take the money out of their maintenance account.
So we should approve that as well.
We'll approve that one also. Okay. And four, to see if the sum of money to the border health expense. This is a prior year expense, yeah, so we'll have to see.
Support them.
We support that, and that's a nine-tenths vote, so we'll have to see where we can get that one.
Yeah.
And also to see, five, is to see if the town will transfer some of money from available funds to the cemetery expense to pay a prior year's bill, we have to do that one and support that also. And article six is to see if the town will transfer a sum of money from available funds to the transfer station account to pay a prior year's bill, and that's, that's for $47.83, that was for national bridge, so we have to support that one also.
Yeah.
And then, seven is to see if the town will transfer a sum of money from available funds to the snow and ice account to cover the deficit.
Yeah.
We have to do that also, and we'll probably have to get that figure from Karen.
Right.
And we'll just see where the money's going to come from.
Some of them are in the market.
Yeah, we're approving, yeah, we're supporting all of these.
Yep.
So, that's it, so I would like to have, up Ken's still with us. Okay, Ken, I'm sorry.
Can I show you a picture? This is a company, separate company, who, this is Rogers Field.
Oh.
And they want to replace, and these holes, when they have this wire, it's like this thick.
Yep.
It's like 45,000 volts. Everything seemed to be okay, because they were a little concerned about a few wetland pieces, and I said to them, the lady's supposed to come, so we can walk, and be low of activity there. Just wondering what was going on.
Good.
Okay, good.
All right. Yep, very professional there.
We don't have anyone here, so I would like the motion to adjourn at 2:25.
You have that motion?
I'll second the motion, on my favor.
Aye.